Yeah, yeah, it's ridiculous.
That's all part of that, right? You work on your vehicle stuff that they assumed John Buell.
Yeah. I think they wanted.
They did, yeah.
So they're working. Or to come. But the theme of the base. I mean, it even smelled different. Okay. It's not tickles.
Okay. Then a clock. This meeting is called. Start with pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And go with your saying invitation thing.
Wish everyone, uh, wish everyone a very, very happy twenty twenty five. Appreciate everyone being here today. I want to welcome. Vicky, um, Ray, um, also even though they're not here, they, uh, welcome Judge Trusdale. Um, and also our new prosecutor as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wow, you can stay seated, but if you guys would rise and raise your right hand. I'm going to give you the O. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The county constitution of this state that I will thank.
My memory's got short term, so you gotta give me blanks.
And that you will faithfully discharge.
You got it to begin. You got it. You gotta give me a section and then I can repeat after you.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? I can't remember all that. We have to actually say this after you.
Oh, you do have to say it after me. Oh, I thought I just read it and then you said. Okay. I do solemnly, what we see in the, let's see. I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
And then I'll faithfully discharge the duties of office.
Of Commissioner. Of Antrim County. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations. And then each one of you needs to sign this book. Sign here and put your name.
Here. Print it underneath?
Yes. Please write your mission.
In front here. All right, under it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now I appointed Jeremy as the teller. We're going to do. A secret ballot. And I need a motion for the elections chairman.
Make the motion.
Eric, sorry.
I make a motion to nominate Commissioner Halfren for chair.
Okay, we have two motions on the table. Okay, go ahead and vote and. And that if you'll like their ballots and pass them down to the teller.
For Bill Heffron. One for Terry Van Alstine. One vote for Bill Heffron. One vote for Terry Van Alstine. And one vote for Bill Heffron.
Okay. Bill Heffron is new chair. Pass three to two. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I'm asking for. A motion for vice chair.
Actually, it takes over the meeting.
Oh, okay. Then I will give the power to you. This is all moved to me.
Absolutely. What we're all here for is to help each other. So, uh, motions to elect a vice chairperson, please.
I nominate, uh, Commissioner Jerus Rubin for vice chair.
Why don't they Terry Van Alstine?
Any other nomination? This is not a secret ballot. This is just by. You know that. Okay, we have, uh, nominations for Jerus, uh, nomination for Terry. All those, uh, in favor of Terry being, uh, vice chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Jerus being vice chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes for Jerus. Jerus Ruben will be the vice chairperson for twenty twenty five. Uh, public comment tonight, tonight, this morning. Any, uh, any public comment this morning?
Wanted to introduce.
Please. Thank you. So everyone can hear you on Facebook as well.
Oh. Um, I am the new treasurer for the Antrim County Fair. So I just want to introduce myself because I will be the one representing the fair at the board here. So. I'm Sandy Tuttle and I live here in Bel Air.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
Hi, Sandy.
And if you need anything from me, let me know.
And same.
We've got great encouragement and, um, drive this year with the fair. So we're pretty excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Further public comment moving on to, um, our list of resolutions for the year. Resolution oh, one dash twenty twenty five, setting, uh, meeting dates and times.
I'll make that motion or support.
Move to second. Any discussion on that? Derek?
Yeah, the second meeting at the. On the month. At six o'clock. I'm wondering if we would be agreeable to put that to six thirty. Um, it's, uh. It's tight to get from mental health to here. Uh, I don't know how many of you remember when Christian Marcus was there. He had the same thing. Now I have your, uh. Seeing how quick you can get from Tatski over to here, so.
I'll amend my, uh, my motion to make it at six thirty.
Thank you. And I agree.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, um. We did have a second.
It was me and I agreed.
Yep, so. Uh, been moved to second at, uh, the regular meeting times, Antrim County Board of Commissioners, uh, will be. Uh, held on the first Thursday of the month at ten AM and the third Thursday of the month at six thirty. PM, each, uh, each month, uh, roll call vote, Vicky.
Okay. Commissioner Heffron?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruby?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallig?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scola?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, resolution is adopted. Resolution oh, two, two, uh, twenty twenty five Civil Rights Act, Americans with Disabilities Act and the Family Medical. And Family Leave Act as presented. Can I have a motion for that?
I'd like to motion.
Have a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's removed a second and any, uh, any discussion on this resolution? Being, being non again, Vicky, roll call, please.
Commissioner Heffron?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruby?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine?
Yes, Van Alstine.
Van Alstine, I'm starting. I'll start. Commissioner Hellway?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scola?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, resolution adopted. Resolution oath. Free twenty twenty five public distribution. Uh, minutes. May I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll, I'll support.
Thank you very much. Move to second. Any, uh, discussion? Yes, Derek.
Second to last, be it also further resolved that it be advertised in the county newspapers that the report of each session is available from the office of the county clerk. Without charge. Is that required that we put an notice in the newspapers?
Still is, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cause. I think all my constituents look on the left. Right on our county website.
And that is prevalent, but, um, at this point, they still do require notifications.
That's a state law or?
Thank you.
Good. Anything else? Yeah, Vicky, roll call for me, please.
Commissioner Heffron?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruby?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine, the guy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hellway?
Yes.
Commissioner Scola?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, resolution adopted. Resolution oh, four, twenty twenty five. Uh, reference annual reports.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll support.
Move to second. Any discussion? Being no discussion, Vicky, again, roll call for me, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruby?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine?
Yes.
Commissioner Hellway?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scola?
Yes. Thank you very much. Resolution adopted. Motion, um. Motion, uh, regards. To. Antrim County Board of Commissioners rules and procedures.
Show mode. I support.
So you move and support it.
We already changed the six thirty. Well, those have to change it back, right? Yeah, I know this is down. I just had to be corrected. Has amended it yet.
Any other, uh? Comments? Jeffs?
Uh, under vice chair. Duties page five. Four point two, two, three, says the vice chairperson. Or other designated commissioner along with one other commissioner shall review the claims and accounts for presentation. And recommendations to the board. Um, I, I have a question. I, my personal feeling is that Brad's doing a great job. Organizing our claims and accounts. And I don't know that it's necessary for two of us to review those. I think one of us reviewing them every month would be sufficient, but that's my own personal. It, it just. Getting two people here at exactly the same time and. Any commissioner who has a question on the bills can ask the question on the bills or they can ask Brad directly on our claims and accounts.
But Bill and I actually talked to, um. Brad about that today and. Uh, there'll be a time that we won't have to do that anymore, but right now we have to do that, so. Because. We're working on a couple of other things. It's going to change. And once we get that stuff instituted, we won't have to. Basically, we won't have to hardly do claims and accounts at all. It'll be just a motion to approve the bills in front of us. But right now it's can't happen.
Okay, yeah.
But, uh, and we can change them when that day comes.
Which will be soon, sooner rather than later. Yep, um, um, Brad will let us know when we can. Get out of that business. Um, if else, right? I, um, bear with me a second as I find it, please. Highlighted and I did. And there we go.
Five, two, one, PJ.
Thank you, Terry. Um. I'm wondering if, um, if. We would be agreeable to not having, um, hard copies of agendas mailed out. Um, anymore. Um. And if, uh, you, you folks know, and I'm the least technologically advanced person in the world, but you know, I just rely on this for my agendas. Uh, I mean, the iPads that the county purchased. Um, and I know some of us prefer to still have them in hard copy, um, which is fine. Um, obviously, um, but could we save the mailing costs and simply pick those up, uh, if, if we want them?
Yeah, I already, I already do.
That's mine. I just like mine here. I mean, cause I still like to, I put notes and everything.
You can pick it up though, hey, Jason?
Or I can just, I look at it online anyway beforehand. Okay, I like, you can just have hard copy here for me when I.
We're good with that, um.
That will.
Yeah, so five point two.
You want to pr- provide a printed copy on request?
Yeah. And, and get rid of the shall mail a copy in five point two? Thank you very much. Anything else? And I think it was Terry and Jason. You guys are good with your motion. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And I do not need a.
No, no.
I need a, do I need a?
No. Just a call? No, just a vote.
Hey, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, with a post. Okay, moving on to resolution. Okay, moving on to resolution oh five twenty twenty five. The positive report is as presented. Can I get a, uh, motion on that?
I'll make it.
Can I get a second?
I'll support.
Thank you. Move by Hellwig second by. Ruben, any further discussion? Uh, Vicky's roll call, please.
Commissioner Heckner?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruben?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine?
Yes.
Commissioner Helway?
Yes.
Commissioner Scola?
Yes. Thank you. Adapted. Resolution oh six twenty twenty five, reference tax waivers as presented. May I get a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll support.
Moved and seconded Van Alstine and Helway. Any discussion? Roll call, Vicky.
Commissioner. Heffernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruben?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine?
Yes.
Commissioner Helway?
Yes.
Commissioner Scola?
Yes. Thank you. Adopted resolution oh seven twenty twenty five. Uh, the treasurer's investment authority. Twenty twenty five dash.
I'll make that motion.
Six.
Work.
Moved by Van Alstine, supported by Hellway. Any discussion? Roll call, Vicky, please.
Commissioner Heffernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruben?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine?
Yes.
Commissioner Helway?
Yes.
Commissioner Scola?
Yes. Thank you. Adopted. Resolution. Oh eight. Twenty twenty five, fair housing as presented. May I get a motion?
Yes, I'll make it.
What would make a motion? You gotta get a second.
I'll second it.
Second, Van Alstine. Any discussion? Uh, roll call again later.
Commissioner Heffernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruben?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Alstine?
Yes.
Commissioner Helway?
Yes.
Commissioner Scola?
Yes. Thank you. Adapted. Uh, moving to, uh, claims and accounts.
I'll make a motion that we pay ca- claims and accounts of two hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred dollars and forty two cents.
I'll second. And any questions or discussions about the bills? Roll call me on that too, Vicky.
No, just a motion or just I get it, just vote on it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Um, one quick thing on claims and accounts. In front of me, I have the signup form for claims and accounts. Uh, for the first six months of twenty twenty five, if you'd like to sign up, that would be great. All I've got.
Thank you, Terry. I will, um, as I did last year, I'll, I'll, uh. I'll volunteer to be there, um. But anybody has a burning desire to also join me or be there regardless. I know. The, um, other thing I do, only other thing, um, I would like to mention. Oh, first of all, is there any, like, any other comments you have tonight or today, Ray?
Yes.
Jason, anything else?
No, sir.
Derek?
Good job.
Okay, um, I'm gonna pass that. The only thing I want to ask in front of you is, uh, in regards to, uh, appointments, uh, uh, to committees for. Twenty twenty five, I'm passing out the current assignments. Um, uh, if y'all could take a look at that, I would really appreciate, uh, you letting me know if there's something, there's some committee you do not want to be on. Um, I'll do the best I can to accommodate that unless, eh, nobody wants to be on anything. So, uh, so please let me know. If I don't hear, uh, hear from anybody, I'll assume there's no objections from any money to be put on, uh. Any committees, so, um. I did just want to ask that. Uh, being nothing else, any further public comment this morning? That's from last year. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. There being no comment, um.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
My second.
Thank you. Move second.
I think we need a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. It's fine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye, thanks very much.
If I could get the board members up here. Picture what I'm saying.
Are you like them all?
Well, I do, but I'd like to.
Alright.
I was requested by. Where you want us to. Hang on.